All right, the Bothell City Council is back from break and we're going to start with AB 17-124, which is the East Norway Hill Park Master Planning. We have Director Keats to kick off the presentation.
Okay, thank you Mayor, Council. I'd like to also reintroduce to you Mr. Bob Droll back here as our landscape architects helping the city with this project. Now I'll just go through real briefly an update from the last time we met. But just by way of reminder, East Norway Hill Park, 25 acres roughly. 2.7 acres of the site are developed, mostly 22.7 acres undeveloped. The park currently has an open playfield with two informal soccer use fields. There's some picnic tables, benches, and that that are near the playfields. Gets a lot of use in the fall with soccer primarily, other than that just primarily neighborhood use. There's no water, no restroom currently, no parking. All the parking is in surrounding neighborhoods. And oddly enough, 3.3 acres of the park are located within the city of Kirkland. It's adjacent to the Tolpe Pipeline Trail. And if you go up there on any given day, you'll see a lot of people walking their dog or just hanging out, but it does get, like I mentioned, the good neighborhood use and then again the soccer use in the fall. So we've went through a pretty long process on this. Started in 2015 with the issuance of an RFP to get Mr. Droll on board. March 7th, we did do a council study session, got a lot of good information from council. Since then, we've went back and had further citizen review. The parks boards looked at the revisions and we've drafted a final plan for your consideration tonight that Mr. Droll will show you. And then, of course, tonight we're here for consideration of adoption of the master plan. And so, right down in the bottom there, you can see the park in the red boundary, the triangular piece there on the bottom, that's actually the part that's in Kirkland. This is viewing the park from northeast 55th looking into the park. This is the primary entry point. If you just turn right around, look down the street from there, this gives you a good idea of the residential streets around the park where people will park to use the, get into the park and park their car. This is the open playfield, one of the benches there in the foreground. There are two soccer fields there and another view to the southeast of the open field area. There are a couple paths and trails in the park. This particular section is in the Kirkland portion and trails do get a fair amount of use. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Bob and let him go through some of the revisions we've made in our talks with our study session with council and talks with the surrounding neighbors. Bob?
Thank you. My name is Bob Droll. I'm a landscape architect and I thank you again for this opportunity to be involved with this project. I'm going to retread some of the stuff that we talked about the last meeting. And some of those things are, the primary legal access is off 155th. It's the only access to the Bothell part of the park. And it opens up into an open playfield that has already been developed. Remember, this is a King County park and they made some minor improvements into this park. There's no utilities into the park at all, but there are utilities to the park in 155th. So we delineated the wetland, let's see, in the park core. And the park core is where it says 3.4 acres open playfield. We did a design survey in that area and also delineated the wetland on the west side of that wetland. And we were, so we could find out where the wetland is to make sure that we avoided any improvements into the wetland, also the wetland buffer. And as John noticed, there is a triangular piece on the south side, that's the end to Kirkland. And in that triangular piece, there's a number of trails and two of those trails hook up to the neighborhoods to the south, which end up at 122nd Avenue. We can see that loop road right there. So you might recall, there's a number of things you asked us to do based on that last meeting that we had. One of the things was to look at a couple options of where the parking go, but also keep, you know, try to get the parking a little bit closer to the play area or to the field itself. And you might recall, that last diagram that we did was kind of a bubble diagram schematic. So this is a lot more details drawn in AutoCAD, everything's the scale, a lot more understanding of the site and how this works right now. So we looked at two different options and actually we looked at them with the neighborhood. We sat in that conference room right over there with about, I believe, six neighbors and all of them were within walking distance, I believe, of this park. And the question was, is that, well, what if we develop the parking on the north side? There's the north side and the south side, the south being of the 155th access. This is the north option and you can see the distance between, because the question is, what's the distance between the edge of the paving and the property line? People are concerned about having a parking lot a little bit too close to their home. So in this particular one, here's about 72 feet away from the edge of pavement to the apparent property line. And also, what type of trees will be cut down and how many? In this particular option, there's about 40 trees that will be, that have to be removed. Many of those trees, I might add, I have been deemed by the Parks Department, Aaron, who's a forester, as being unhealthy and not necessarily hazard trees, but trees that would not make the cut anyway. So some of those trees would be come down. I should point out that they're mostly deciduous trees. So we're talking about alders and maples, mainly mostly maples, and they're in various conditions. Some of them have a nice looking crown, some of them are all kind of broken up. The other thing that you were concerned about last time is the view of the parking lot of the field. So you can see that most of the parking lot is north of the midfield line, but part of the parking lot is on the midfield line. So all of those parking stalls that are actually facing to the east, looking upon the field, actually have a really good view of the entire field from north to southeast to west. Also, you'll notice in this one, the park core, one of your concerns is that the park core are the play areas and those activity areas. In that last graphic, they were shown between the parking and the playfield. And your concern was that, well, geez, I gotta walk through that, it's going to be destructive. So based on what that guidance and also the topography, we're able to tuck the park core in kind of a little bit south of where the parking area is. So you're not looking over the play area at all. However, if you are sitting in your car, you can see the play area from your vehicle. Also, it's important that when you pull in to the, well, off of 155th, you immediately have an understanding of how the site is laid out. You look to the right, you can see the play area and the restroom. That's, the restroom and the kiosk are the only vertical elements of this park design. And you see them, there's a couple trees in front of them, but you see them right away. So immediately, you're orientated and you'll know that you'll have to go to the left. So when you hit to the left, you'll see there's a two lane parking lot there and then it goes to the left and swings to the north and now that's a one-way area. So I believe this particular design addresses those concerned. I didn't draw this up for you, but I did for the neighbors at that meeting. If you were to take this parking lot and flip it so it orientates towards the south, you'll notice that the parking area is now, of course, really close to the Tolpe Pipeline, which is, you know, it's a cleared right of way. There's a pipeline in there, there's a nice trail going down the middle, but it's a big cleared area. So you're going to have two cleared areas pretty close to one another. The distance between the edge of the pavement and the apparent property line is 79 feet. Now, I say apparent property line because we did a survey, a design survey, but we did not do a boundary survey. We didn't think we needed to do that at the time. If this option is chosen, then about 50 trees would be removed and most of those are conifers. And I'm not, I don't share this opinion alone, but anybody who's been out there and looked at these, looked to the north and looked to the south, you'll probably come to the conclusion that the trees to the south, the conifers to the south are really nice. They have a very nice high canopy. There's a glade of salau underneath it. It has a very nice feel to it. The area to the north doesn't have that same characteristic. I should say that most of this west area has got some infestation of ivy and other invasive species that will need to be addressed. But with this particular one, the view of the field from the parking is really kind of less desirable because if you imagine where the parking is, if you flipped it, it's not even that close to the midfield of the line, of the midfield line. So most of your parking orientation is really to the southern end of the field and doesn't give you a broad view, 380 degree view. And because of those reasons, the north option for the parking lot and the south option, or the south location of the play area was preferred by the folks that showed up. On a park-wide scale, the actual development is a pretty small area. But this particular layout has got a number of opportunities that we even talked about last time. And one of the things that was talked about that we incorporated was a skate node. And that's a pretty small little skate node. It's for beginners, it's not designed for a destination skating facility. It, you know, you don't join the army as a general. You have to join sports as a beginner and that's what this is designed for. There's only like two, what the skaters would call, two tricks into this little area. And they're all oriented out towards the field. You would, the way I envision it, you would drop down into a bowl and have a little bump and on the uphill side, the parking lot side, there'd be a rail there that you wouldn't grind, but you could launch off of. And the whole idea there is to protect any air, skateboards from hitting the cars. But you also want your skate node to be close to the parking lot and you want it to be visually accessible without any type of obstruction at all because you want officers and the general public to see it immediately and you want everybody to have a really good view of this. And that's why we've located it in that particular location. The parking lot is 30 parking stalls. Let's see, 26 of them are 90-degree parking stalls. And if you, let's see here, if you can follow this cursor, there are four parallel parking stalls right there. The parking stalls are a different color because they're a different texture. Tonight, you heard from the conservation folks about rain gardens and other low-impact developments. And we're proposing here to have permeable pavement here, not pervious concrete or porous asphalt, but actually pervious pavers. So there's gaps between the pavers. There's a deep reservoir zone underneath that and that holds the water and allows it to infiltrate in. We're going to have a storm catch basin on top of that, but raised up bottom from the reservoir core. So when that thing fills up, if it fills up, it has a place to go. And you'll see there'll be a catch, this is about a one and a half foot drop from there to there. So there's a catch basin there, there's a catch basin there, and there's a catch basin there. And all that's connected to that rain garden right here. And that rain garden is connected to that catch basin. And you can see these lines right here, all those lines are subsurface drainage and all that comes out to that line, I'm sorry, that line and that line are the main manifolds. And those are level spreaders. So it gets, it receives treatment in the permeable pavement basin itself. It also receives treatment in the rain garden and then it gets dispersed into the level spreader out to the wetland area. And of course, it all has to be done at pre-development rates. So the blue that you see, that is your typical class, or HMA class half-inch asphalt. And that would drain to these pavers where the water, once again, will have a chance to infiltrate and get treated and go to the rain garden. All of the other pavement that you see is right now estimated as asphalt, hot mix asphalt, half-inch size. So all these gray trails you see in there, that's the size. Everything in here is about eight foot wide, including this loop trail, all eight foot wide. Seems to be pretty wide, you might think, but every time I've been out there, there's been a lot of people that actually walk that loop, whether there's a trail there or not. And I think that we're just going to accommodate that type of use. The sports field, you required, or you asked about the sports field and having the field a little bit bigger than we showed last time. This field is 210 feet wide and 340 feet long. To put that field in perspective, your high school soccer field is 195 feet wide and 340 feet long. So it's a little bit wider than your high school field. This is a pretty big field, but it fits within the development impact that's there right now. So we're not clearing any trees to make this field happen. We're working within the existing zone that we have. And another reason for this loop trail is that it makes it easier for maintenance to take care of it. Now we have a defined edge. Everything inside of the trail gets mowed, everything outside of the, everything inside of the trail gets mowed once a week, everything outside the trail gets mowed maybe twice a year. So there's a clear delineation there from a maintenance standpoint. The restroom is in kiosk and a little plaza, some tables are right here. That's the restroom, that's the kiosk and some tables that can look down so parental supervision can look down upon this play area. And that play area is anywhere from 30 inches to 36 inches lower than the restroom itself. You might, I'll show you a picture in a second that kind of shows that relationship. Okay, so there's a bigger enlargement of that park core. You might recall last time that we had the shelter and the restroom kind of in the same area and there was concern that maybe it was too crowded and then spread it out. So we have, we have done that, we have recognized that and put the shelter close to the parking, close to the park core, but not in the way of anything. That's a good spot for right there. There are some alders that are there right now that are not in healthy condition and need to be removed. And that gives a really commanding view of the open space, but not a domineering view. In other words, if you're in that park picnic shelter, it's not like you own that whole field, but you can certainly play in the field. And remember, this striping here may or may not be there because this field is really designed for practice and not for games. And the reason for that is we only have 30 parking stalls. If you play a bunch of games here, you're going to be parking into the neighborhood like they're doing right now. And there's been a commitment that that probably, that wouldn't be programmed for games. I believe John has talked to the soccer folks and what he has reached agreement is that, yeah, you can practice here, but there needs to be an hour between practices, which is perfect because then though that team leaves, the other team arrives and they're not there at the same time. Because if they're there at the same time, 30 parking stalls might not be enough. The dog-off leash area, you, I think there's, okay, okay. Well, in your packet and out there and right here, some cross-sections give you an idea of the relationship. There's an example of what I see. This is, we designed this in some mammoth, but this is how we would take care of this. We'd have theater steps here and then regular steps in that area, providing a separation. And we can have a themed area. What's inside that play area right now isn't exactly decided and that's another design And just different types of shelters. Cost, capital cost, cradle of grave cost, $1.9 million and it's broken down into those 10 categories, which in your packet you'll see, there are a lot of line items for these so that you can see how these categories are built. And, you know, you can design the greatest park in the world, but if you don't maintain it properly, then it's not going to, it's going to be a failure. So what we always do with parks is work with the maintenance folks, determine what the maintenance level would be and take hours, do the inventory, take hours, put your labor rates in there, which John gave me. And you can expect the annual maintenance cost for this particular park to be about $79,000 and it's plus or minus 10%. Depends on you're moving snow or doing a whole bunch of stuff that year. So I've just been told that I'm out of time and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, is there any questions from council? Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to thank you for the updated design. My concerns were addressed and so I'm really happy to see the parking overlooking the field. And I was concerned about the playground area and the field being adjacent with the park and parking lot to the other side of the playground area. And I thought for safety, that would be a concern for parents. So I see that's changed as well. And so, yeah, I really appreciate you hearing your concerns and addressing them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
I know this is an item of old business, but I think we do have a member of the public who was a neighbor who participated, but he's saying no, so that must mean a ringing endorsement of the plan that you've presented. So I'm really excited about it, it looks really nice. I like the idea of the loop around the field because it's almost like a track, you know, when you're there watching your kid practice as a parent, you can get your exercise in by walking the loop. I think that's a really neat feature.
You're going to see kids doing tricycle races.
Yeah, probably, yeah. I think you've answered this before, but how is it that, is Kirkland fine with us locating an off-leash dog area in their property? And do we own the property that's in the 3.3 acres of Kirkland?
We do own the property and we reached out to Kirkland staff, their park staff and their community development staff and just gave them, you know, a brief snapshot of what we were considering and they were fine with what we were proposing.
And does that require any kind of inner local agreement that recognizes that we're operating within their jurisdiction?
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's our park.
And then for the play area, are there elements that are pre-decided? It says preschool play and school age play. Are those elements that are yet to be determined?
I think the way Bob had it set up was you traditionally have like a play area for five to 12 or six to 12 and then like two to five or something like that and they're usually separated. And I think that's how we had it set up. And we would actually pick the type of play area, we would do that at a later date when we were getting ready to build it.
Okay, well, it looks terrific, so thank you so much.
Councilmember Agnew?
Thank you for your presentation, but I would move that we approve the preferred master plan for East Norway Hill Park as presented.
Second.
It's my move by Councilmember Agnew, second by Deputy Mayor, to approve the preferred master plan for East Norway Hill Park as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, I had some questions, but there's a motion been made, but I'll still ask my questions. So can you go back to the picture of the park as a whole? Perfect, either picture works just fine. So as you enter the site, just on the right, is there a reason we decided not to put an additional, maybe 10 or 12 parking spots? Are we trying to limit the amount of parking that we have within the park?
Your question is, why is there more parking on the right-hand side?
That's right. As you drive in, just on the right, between the little bump-out trail and the restroom, it seems that we, with the topography, even I saw the third picture down, shows that we could potentially have 10 more to 12 more spots in there.
Those are some of the biggest con of Doug Furs that are in there and they're in good health. And based on what we're doing here and if it's managed right, I don't think you need that type of parking all the time, 95% of the time.
Okay. That's a great explanation. I appreciate the 30 spots because you imagine there's 12 kids on each side of the field or so. And 30 spots hopefully adequately prepares for that. The field size, 2010 by 340, though that's not an exact size for high school, would it still allow for regulated play with the clubs? Even though, I know you stated there wouldn't be any games, is there, are we creating a field that ultimately is not allowed for standard play in one of our leagues?
No, we envisioned that it would be for standard play, for practice, possibly games primarily for practices up to a certain age. And I think we were looking at about like U-12 or something like that.
Okay. See, my hope is that we're, we would not put a restriction on this field for play because there's such a limited amount of playfields within our city. And if we're going to spend $1.9 million, my hope is that that investment could be for the city as a whole to come and actually play games there. And one thing that's wonderful is North Shore Junior High, my alma mater, has a couple fields there. And you could imagine that there could be tournaments that could go on, on three different fields at least on that facility. Is there a restriction to be able to have actual games on this field?
We were, when we talked to the youth soccer folks, we were looking at it primarily as a practice venue, just to keep the impact on the neighborhood down. But, you know, we could possibly have games there, but the key, whether practices or games, we just want to do it in a scheduled manner where there's breaks in between games and so on and so forth. So we don't have an influx of people coming in and overwhelming the parking especially.
Perfect. I think the space planning on this is excellent, ideal, extremely well-done. How it's laid out with the parking, how it's with the park there and a little skate node like you talk about. I just appreciate the thought that was put into it. I think it feels well, there's the right energy or whatever you would say. I'm glad that Councilmember Sandberg's long-term dream of a dog park is coming to fruition here within our city and job well-done and I'll certainly be voting in support of the motion that's on the floor.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to speak to my motion, really just to mention that I did meet with Mr. Kurwitz when the plan, this new plan came out and he is in support. And we walked, we walked the park and so I feel confident the neighbors are happy with this plan.
Maybe I just want to speak to the motion. Councilmember Sandberg?
I'm definitely in support of this master plan and I do recognize that there is parking available at North Shore Middle School and Woodmore Elementary, so I'm sure our staff will be able to consider that for future practice and/or game planning. And I did want to comment that this is, this is a master plan and as far as I know, we do not have any funds. We do not have the $2 million allocated or identified to develop the plan. This is just a first step. So if people are watching and expecting this to start building in the near future... this is step one with the master planning process. And we still have to identify both the funds for the capital construction and for ongoing maintenance and operation. But it's a great first step.
Councilmember McKeel?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I think it's fabulous. I too had a couple of questions, but unfortunately I'm gonna savor that for right now. But, um, I will be supporting this because I think it's, uh, it's definitely a need that we have within our community to provide these fields for the youth within our community as well as afar and throughout the region. Uh, the one thing that I would comment on is I need, want to make sure that we are being, um, responsible in talking to all youth sports organizations. Because I heard you mentioned soccer a couple of times. And I'm hearing throughout the community that we, we need to provide space for all the youth sports leagues. So if we can make an effort to ensure that we're, you know, talking to all the different groups, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Everybody's had a chance to speak, I think. So go ahead and place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmembers by the absent and excused. All right. Now we're in a new business, uh, AB seventeen dash one-two-five resolution, accepting development services, cost of service and fee schedule or study, sorry. The link does not work. Planning and Community Development Director, are you doing the presentation today?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just as, as a brief background history on this, the, uh, planning and development fees schedule that we're, that we've been working on for the past two years really relates to planning, engineering, fire suppression fees that are part of entitlement permitting process. It does not change the building permit fees. And in terms of revenue that the city receives from development for the review services, about two-thirds of our revenue comes from building permits where, which is assessed, which are assessed based on valuation of the construction. So this, this really addresses the other one-third, which goes to all the other permitting, uh, that the city does for development. Um, that, that includes most of the planning permits, uh, such as subdivisions and, uh, engineering permits, grading, uh, fire prevention permits, uh, all, all together. The city has, has been charging these by an hourly rate, uh, for nearly twenty years. It's a long, longstanding, uh, method. That rate has been billed after the fact. Once the hours are recorded and in the system, they're then billed to the development. Uh, we had feedback from the development community that it made it difficult to estimate the cost of permitting for Bothell because it was an unknown. It was difficult to plug into Performas, difficult to, uh, figure out, uh, how it would end up, uh, affecting the, the cost of the development. Those two items were, uh, identified in twenty thirteen in a DSI evaluation by the Latimore Group. And also again, in September of twenty fifteen, when we did our own, uh, survey through, through, um, our department, uh, and we, we actually took two years' worth of development and sent everybody a survey and said, please respond to this and let us know what your priorities are. This was the top priority by far. The city contracted with, uh, FCS Group. It could not be done with, without assistance and we thank council for that. That service is important to this process to, uh, guarantee or at least ensure that, uh, we have cost recovery of the time it takes to provide this service. Uh, that's a critical, uh, critical element of the project. Uh, mid, mid-project, and Peter Moy representing FCS can, can add more detail than I. We discovered that, uh, the computer data had some, um, I wouldn't say flaws, but it had, it had some, uh, drawbacks to it. Because we may only have had one permit over the period of time that we evaluated. That's not enough to base a fee on. Uh, we also, uh, some, some hours were collected for the whole project and put underneath one permit rather than dispersed among three or four permits to do the project. And that made some of the data a little unreliable. So, uh, we had to extend, uh, the contract, uh, and go forward with, uh, uh, secondary analysis to cover, to uncover the number of hours that are estimated for these permits by permitting staff and, uh, bring forward that element, that kind of anecdotal element into the process and, and adjust the model to incorporate, uh, that information. Uh, that involved everybody. That involved, uh, public work staff, fire staff, planning staff, building staff, as, as well as permitting, uh, technicians. So everybody, uh, participated, including administrative services for all of those organizations to fully get at, uh, the cost recovery of, uh, permitting time. So we had a, we presented our preliminary findings to the city council in November. And, uh, city council, uh, confirmed that your direction was to recover full cost of those services. Uh, we've, we've gone back and adjusted, updated the model, uh, for full cost as well as brought it up to twenty seventeen, uh, costs for personnel and overhead, uh, in indirect and direct costs. So that, that work is all, has all been completed. Public engagement included a presentation to the Development Services Advisory Group. That, that occurred in June. The home builders were there as well as developers of, uh, commercial properties and mixed-use developments. And, uh, they just, they, they had a couple of questions about, uh, certain permits. There were some questions about short subdivisions, long subdivisions. And then they, they finally indicated that we just wanted us to go back and see if, uh, fees that were collected for, for some of the more recent developments matched or came, uh, in, came close to what the fees would be charged under the new system. Uh, we, we, uh, took three examples, uh, mixed-use downtown development, a long subdivision, fairly sizable seventy-lot subdivision. Uh, those are both in King County and they included, uh, utilities served by the city of Bothell. And one subdivision in Snohomish County, one short plat. Uh, when we aggregate that information, there's some differences in terms of the cost for those developments. Uh, but as an aggregate, when you put them all together, uh, it, it comes up very close to, uh, the same cost that we would likely experience in develop, in development services and supplying, applying that service to the customers. I think probably drilling down on that, uh, certainly we learned that the mixed-use development, uh, didn't, didn't necessarily generate the same number of costs for utilities. But, uh, the long, long subdivision, uh, certainly did, uh, which had, which included, uh, twenty-five hundred feet of, of utility extension and roadways. Um, that's, that's common with the way we've, we've established this fee. Cause many of the fees have multipliers by size. And that is if there's linear footage, if there's number of lots, or if there's number of acreage, a base fee plus a fee, uh, which some people would, would identify as a, well, a multiplier fee or, or a complexity fee. I, I've heard that term used. That gets to the scale of the project. If it's a, if it's a large-scale development, uh, it's gonna have more sheets to review. And that's gonna take, uh, that's going to take more time from our staff and that'll result in a larger fee. There were no real, real, uh, issues with the development community that would cause us to go back and revisit this. The model is sound and, and it, uh, works. So, um, we'll continue to monitor it for the next year. Uh, we're, we're suggesting that we go ahead and, and approve the study tonight. We'll incorporate it into the mid-year, uh, mid, I should say mid fiscal year, uh, adoption for twenty eighteen with the update of the rest of the fees. And, uh, that'll, that'll begin service January first of twenty eighteen. That's a, that's good for, uh, for the city. We need some time to calibrate and change our computer, uh, programs, uh, for the fees. That's good for the industry, cause they, they'll know, except January first is the date when they start paying upfront rather than, uh, pay as we go. And, uh, for a period of time, they'll be, as we transition, we'll have two systems going. So there's some, there's some, uh, work that we need to do for internally to prepare for that. So our recommendation is to move forward. Oh, I need to advance some slides. This kind of summarizes, there's the table that is in the report that we, that we talked about. With, uh, Development Services Advisory Group. And, uh, so in conclusion, the state, the study is complete. The model will, the model will work well for the city. Some more sampling is, is warranted and, and we need to continue to monitor it. But, uh, we, we think this is, uh, the direction that, uh, the city wants to go. And this, this model gets us there. I think I'll turn time over to Peter Moy and, uh, and then take questions.
So the, the first thing, it's been sort of a long process. I know if you've been here on the council for a couple of years, you've seen me several times. I wanted to really thank the staff. As we've gone through this process, it's been a iterative process. We've had a lot of meetings on a lot of these different fees. And we've sort of talked about really how much time does it take to do something? What should the fee structure look like? And, and so in the end, we do have sort of a combination of different types of fees. It's not all fixed fees. We have still some hourly fees for those things that really are difficult to, um, really plan ahead to try and say, well, it's gonna take us X amount of time to, uh, perform this review. We have fees that, as Tom had mentioned, that are sort of a combination that where we have a fixed fee. And then there's sort of based on lot size or linear footage or something else. And then we have ones that are just straight a fixed fee. You pay X amount of dollars and you've got your permit or this is what the cost of the permit will be. So I can just give you a little bit of background. Again, these were originally the, the issues that we sort of tried to look at back and starting in two thousand thirteen, fourteen. You know, what's the cost of service, what the city's cost recovery level is? You know, what is your desired cost recovery target? Which, um, basically in terms of one of the briefings that we've had before, you've, you've identified that you wanted to try and get full cost recovery. How would, what would these fixed fees be? Well, now we have a, a good idea of what those would be. Um, and they are in the, in the report, um, based on updating it to what your hourly rates would be, um, in twenty seventeen. Um, how did some of these fees compare to the neighboring cities? They're really difficult to compare because oftentimes the, either the lot's number or it's not a fixed fee. And, um, different cities have different, um, measures on certain types of, um, uh, planning permits and engineering permits. So we don't have an exact kind of thing, but we did do a survey back, um, uh, earlier, um, probably in twenty fourteen, prior to twenty fifteen too. Again, our methodology was basically going through and collecting all this data based on, um, the fee services, what they were. We've identified a number of new fees. I'll get into that a little bit. What those time estimates were, um, and then adding all the labor cost and non-labor cost as well as overhead cost. And we put them together based on building services, planning, engineering and fire. Just a key, couple of key things in terms of the building fees. While the valuation, um, parts didn't change, which are the major portion of the building permits for plan review and, um, building permit inspections, um, they also did, and this was something we talked about earlier, that there was gonna be a change to the plumbing and mechanical fees. And those now are, um, for multifamily, um, um, commercial and other things. Instead of having these component types of, um, measures where, you know, if you have, you know, uh, uh, an extra sink or something, we charge ten dollars or something. It's now going to be based pretty much on valuation. And so, um, once you get an idea, it'll be just like a valuation table. If the contractor comes in and says it's gonna cost or if there's, I'm not sure exactly what the procedure is, but it's gonna be, if your valuation is X amount to install and put in all the plumbing or the mechanical, then you're gonna pay X amount, um, based on, um, the value. So there is a, a table in the, the last chapter, uh, showing what those fees might be and what those, uh, tables would be. So, um.
Just, just real quick while you're at a pause there.
Sure.
Can I get a motion from the council to extend the meeting?
Motion to extend till ten.
Second.
It's moved by Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Sandberg to extend till ten PM. Any discussion on the motion? See you then. Place your vote.
And when we did do the survey.
Oh, one second. That passes unanimously with Councilmembers by the absent and excused. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, when we did do that survey, um, you know, we found that the mechanical base fee was, uh, lower end of the spectrum with only one city being less expensive. Of the remaining seven mechanical fees, um, actually at that time Bothell was the most expensive for four of them. And two of them were in the middle and one was the lowest. So in terms of plumbing, uh, again, the base fee was really pretty low. It was, it was only more expensive than one. And all the other plumbing fixture fees, which are those ten dollar for this and that, um, you know, they were either the same or lower than the other jurisdictions. For planning, and this was a key point, um, when we talked earlier, um, when we looked at really what the cost of all the planning activities and services were, what we found was that really the cost recovery was only about fifty percent. So, um, hopefully in some of these areas, when we actually went and spent time with the, the planning department and the planning staffers, that if we have the correct amount of time that it really takes to perform some of these things, hopefully this cost recovery level will, will rise. For, um, engineering and fire, they were much closer to being almost already close to being at a hundred percent. So, um, but on the planning fees, uh, hopefully those with the fixed fees and depending on what the mix is of those, um, permits that come in, uh, there'll be a higher, uh, level of, uh, cost recovery for your planning fees. And again, this is going back to the planning ones. Again, we have hourly. A lot of them are gonna be transitioned to fixed fees. And then there's also gonna be these, a combination of fix as well as hourly or component types of charges. Um, and as we mentioned before, some of the past charges might not have reflected the actual time and cost. Um, when you're doing hourly billing, you know, one of the things that we find in anything, whether it's this kind of billing or, um, some other kinds of, in other jurisdictions, sometimes planners or people are reluctant to actually charge. And so they don't always charge the, the, the customer sometimes. And so one of the things that that, that having a fixed fee in many other cases, that won't be a problem anymore cause it's gonna be a certain amount and they're gonna pay that amount. Then it's up to really the planners to make sure they can perform and get those permits done within those allocated or estimated hours that we originally came up with. And again, when we, uh, looked at the, uh, cost of service fees, um, back in twenty thirteen, so once we figured out what those fees were, it looked like, um, uh, of the twenty-one that we could sort of find that were comparable, uh, twelve were the highest compared to other cities and five were in the middle and four were, were the lowest. So, but again, that was back three years ago, almost four years ago. In terms of engineering cost recovery, you can see that it was recovering its cost. The only thing is, is that it really, um, what we didn't have a good handle on at that time was really what the department overhead was. So if you add maybe the difference there, you're probably talking at least another fifteen to twenty percent of cost for overhead that would be more department-wide. And so it's pretty, I would say it's pretty close to being, um, uh, full cost recovery on that engineering side. Again, one of the things that we looked at in terms of the fixed fees, there were some new categories that really aren't listed right now. There will, there's a lot of different kind of work. And one of the difficulties about working with the engineering group was trying to figure out, okay, so we do this. Is that a, should that be a fee or should that be? okay, so we do this, is that a, should that be a fee or should that be part of something else? And so we had to really break down a number of the different types of services and permits that should be put together and what those fees should be. A couple of new ones that weren't really identified on your list in terms of the handouts and things is there will be now a specific traffic and currency review. So there's somebody, although we had something, that was mostly to pay for some of the modeling, but now the time that's being spent for looking at traffic and currency, that engineer's time is now going to be part of a permit and those will be instituted. Again, same on developments and things. If they have to put in a new signal as part of either the mitigation or something else, again, or a new permit, we have, again, some time and some costs that they would have to do. Likewise, if there's an existing signal and it needs to be modified, again, we will be charging, the city will be charging a fee for handling that. Some of that fee will also be a pass-through fee to the county because the county does a little bit of the assistance in terms of the signaling aspects. And then the last one that was in there, which occurs, but it wasn't really, again, highlighted, is the residential safe walk review. And so any of the developments that requires to have this looked at, again, there's a separate fee for that now. So, and again, on the engineering side, it's just really, it was difficult to try and figure out at the time what was a comparable fee because of the timing and also because of the way the time was calculated. We didn't really know which permits were which, so we didn't have a good idea of what those costs were. For fire, they were almost pretty close to being 87% cost recovery back in 2013. So we didn't really change a lot of the, some of the hourly rates and things. There are fees that they could increase. Some of them, if you look back at the table back in 2013, there was a number of them that were probably less than 50% in terms of things. It's just a matter of really what the mix of those fees are and I think they were on the higher level or certainly on the volume, too. So you could make it up in volume as well as what the fee is designed to do. So, but they were pretty close. So I'm not sure whether there's going to be many changes in terms of the fire fees, but. So let's see, so in terms of those 10 fire fees that we could compare, in 2013, those fees were, of those 10, seven, Bothell was lowest for seven of them. And of the remaining three, two were in the middle and one was the most expensive. So again, it's easy to compare fire because most of the fire departments have, they already use fixed fees. And so that was, in this case, it was a little bit easier compared to the engineering and planning fees. So that's really our presentation. If you have any questions about the study or other information.
Do we have questions? Deputy Mayor.
So this is for Director Burdette. The, I think, the table that was in your presentation on the different mixed-use long plat and short plat. Could you go to that table? So maybe I'm oversimplifying, but when I look at the table and the mixed-use downtown and short plat, so the negative means that that's not full cost recovery on those particular.
No, that's really, that's really with, it's comparison of, the fixed fee would be under the new schedule. And.
They both say fixed fee.
The actual bill, billing would have, well, the actual billing is under the existing schedule. Fixed fee would be under the proposed schedule.
But what's the variation mean?
Difference and variation. So the answer to your question is, yes, it's cost recoverable. We're covering our costs under the fixed fee. And if you tally all of those together, there's only a 3,000 difference.
Okay, I'm not sure what you just said, but assuming that, assuming that what I said is true. The thing that I'm concerned about is how many long plats are there out there in Bothell versus mixed-use and short plats? And so it looks like we make up for a loss with the long plat, 70 lot, long plats. How many of those are there versus how many mixed-use downtown and short plats? Do you get what I'm asking you?
I mean, there's enough, there's enough variety in all of those categories. Those are common, those are really common permits for us. The variation in those permits really is due to the uniqueness of each site. Some sites are bigger, some sites are more complicated. Some sites have off-site extensions and some don't. So they get to some very site-specific and no two sites are the same. So it, I don't think you, I don't think it, we certainly don't draw that conclusion that, you know, the number of permits that come in in these different categories will change the recovery, but.
I'm just, I'm just asking the question because I don't know the answer.
Yeah.
So you're saying that they roughly pan out?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Sandberg?
If we could just stay on this table for a minute? Because one of my questions was, can you have greater than 100% cost recovery? Because when we're talking about impact fees, you certainly cannot. But in this instance, it looks like you're having greater than 100% cost recovery in some areas offsetting less than 100% cost recovery.
Well.
So the question is certainly for building fees and any other of these, you have to remember that it is, the amount of revenue that you get versus your cost is going to be based on the volume and types of permits you get. And so what we find in doing a lot of these development fees is generally you're trying to make sure that the fee covers the cost of doing business. Now, if you get more than you planned for and more than you budget, you might actually have and create more revenue than you actually had planned on. And so there is a possibility that, yes, you could over-recover. At the same time, there's the same possibility that if you don't get enough of the permits and while the fee says, yes, if we do this process and it takes 10 hours to do this and perform this review, if we don't get enough of them, we're going to be short money and revenue. So there isn't any particular law other than any kind of fee really says, we're trying to just do the cost of service. We're not trying to make a profit necessarily on any of these types of fees. Now, like I said, it depends on really the volume and what your estimates are and what your expenditures are. So in theory, if you were in the downturn, many people said, well, we're losing money because we still have all the staff to do the plans, but there's not enough, you know, applications coming in. So we still have a sunk cost and we didn't lay, we're not laying off people. And many cases, eventually, a year later, they laid off a number of people during the recession. So there can be some ups and downs and I think you should expect that. And certainly in the first year as we go through this process, there's going to be some refinement that's going to have to be done. Again, we've did the best we could in terms of meeting with the staff and estimating what the fees are. You know, the fees are targeted, so hopefully that between, you know, 80% to 90% of all the applicants that come in, that that fee will cover their costs. There still are going to be some exceptions that may take longer. It may be because of the quality of the submission, although from a management standpoint, they are trying to control that. So after, say, two review cycles, if you submit a poorly completed application or permit or plans or something, you only get two chances. And if it's not the city's fault, then we're going to start billing you for more of that time. So in a lot of places, that's sort of how it's worked. So you have, try and get quality plans, quality applications. You do some of that screening early, so then you can move forward and hopefully you won't have a lot of correction cycles. But the fees are designed in general to take the amount of time. Now, why, to answer your question, Councilmember, now why does one say we actually build 100,000 versus when we do the fixed fees, it comes out to be only 50? It could be the nature of the project. It could have been, you know, how people track time. Again, how they were tracking time back in a certain period of time. We weren't really sure whether that was happening as closely as it should. But there's going to be some ups and downs in these. I mean, some people will be paying more, as example, in the long plats. So the more complicated projects are kind of be probably paying a little bit more, especially those that are, have those increments based on lot size and other kinds of things, whereas before they might not have. Again, we're trying to do the best we can in terms of estimating the amount of time and increments, time increments that it takes to do those extra lots and sizes and things like that. So.
Thank you for that explanation. It makes sense. And yet it highlights the importance of volume. And so a lot of times our citizens feel as though, you know, there's so much growth and the city promotes growth. And we can see a part of that in play here when, the way that you're describing the importance of volume in applications. And I'm not saying that, you know, the city drives this. I'm not saying that you're, the data that you're presenting is skewed or wrong. I'm just making a statement that it highlights the importance of volume in maintaining an overall city budget.
And I would say that that's really, when you look at just the past history, that this type of service that you have in Development Services is probably one of the few city services that you offer that is very, very dependent on the economic cycles. And as we all know, compared to five years ago or something like that, we know how that can, how that can fluctuate and how that can impact not just the development department, but as well as things like sales tax and other kinds of things. So, but it is one of the few departments that really can be fairly impacted on any economic downturn.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, okay.
Councilmember Freed?
Well, we clearly have the best city in Snohomish County and King County and Washington as a whole. And so I like the idea that this customer service approach is being applied here at the city. One thing that's been a frustration to many people that I've talked to is the inconsistency of the process when it comes to billing the unknown. And when we have a consistent program that investors could understand, I think that helps breed a lot of trust, right? Because as you come in and submit an application and then you get a bill a month or two later for time, there's always this, well, I didn't expect that. And so ill feelings occur. And so I think it's definitely appropriate, the steps that we will be taking here as a council in this report as it comes forward. So for that, I applaud you. I thank you for the work that you put into it. With that said, I still have some concerns that I think some of the fees are higher than expected, but maybe that's to be expected because we're going from analyzing how much time is taken to now trying to come up with an ultimate lump sum fee or whatever the proper term would be. How do you make sure that, in the past, we've been operating underneath a system where for maybe a short plat that's estimated, somebody's going to spend some time and ultimately bill a lot of time? To go to just a standard fee, how do I, I want to ask this. There's always pressure to perform versus like if you have a flat fee of $4,500, pressure to perform to make sure you're analyzing that short plat in a quicker period of time than if it's just an hourly fee where that could potentially go on further? I mean, how did you consider that?
Well, like I said, one of the things that we tried to do was to say, give us the amount of time that it would take if you get a normal application that's complete and everything else. Granted, there might be a correction cycle here or there. How much time do you feel that it should take? And so they're giving us some of that. Now, they will say, if you talk to some of the planners and talk to some of the engineers, they'll say, well, you know, if we got this kind of plan from X company, we could probably do it pretty quickly because we know, they know the system. They can, they know exactly what we want, whereas maybe somebody from the outside or a do-it-yourselfer comes in and says, here's my plans. So it's going to take some time, but the thing is, is we're, we know that on average, again, we're trying to hit what you think, and we've got a lot of experienced people here who've been here with the city for a while, saying, well, you know, we know if we're trying to hit 80%, we know that those people are the exceptions that we can do, that come in with good plans and everything else and we can get them done pretty quickly. But for the, most of the people, we've got to be a little bit higher so we can, you know, recover all those costs. And that's the difference between really the hourly rates and everything else. So again, it still comes down to partially, again, to make sure we avoid having to spend a lot of churning in terms of plan reviews and applicant corrections and things like that. It is a sort of quality control issue before you accept an application. You know, what steps will you take? And then, like we said before, it's designed, so in talking with the group that if you get, I think it's two, right, or is it three now? It's.
Some are two.
So, yeah, so you get two to three free corrections that's included in that. So that also, you know, has time associated with it that we've built into the fee. If you don't, only need one correction.
One of the things that could be awkward with that is we don't have a policy in the city of a first round, that you, as a city, you can't go back and re-correct something that we missed. But we do that. So if there's a correction that occurs and then the second round comes around, the corrections occur and then the city says, oh, we missed something, then there's a third round, then somebody could be charged for something that the city missed on the original plan.
Well, what we said is that there's, that's up to the discretion of the thing. If it's the city's fault, obviously you shouldn't be.
Oh, that's excellent. Okay, good.
Another correction.
Well, I like the idea of this transparency and consistency that comes with the city. It's wonderful when you're working with like Land Technologies or Core, these engineers that are very experienced to come in. But sometimes you get landowners that like slept at Holiday Inn last night and you have to deal with educating them on how to design the plat and make sure that it's engineered properly. So I guess through this fee system that you've set up, you've taken that all into consideration. This transition won't be perfect, but I think it's definitely in the right direction. Last question I have for you is expediting permits. We've allowed that in the past to pay an extra fee for outside review permits. Are we still allowing that in this fee system?
Yes, we are. We are planning to maintain a list of providers off of the MRSC list, a roster of contractors that can provide these services for an expedited permit, yeah.
It's been a really wonderful tool, I think, that the city's used effectively. So thank you both for your thoughts and professional presentation.
And that, and I'll just say that, you know, we have a significant spike. That helps the city not having to staff up to that level.
Exactly right. Perfect.
So I just have a couple of real easy questions. So in the resolution, it says that we are adopting the FCS Development Services Cost of Service and Fee Study dated June 2017, but the actual report we have is July.
It should be July.
It should be July, okay. I think that was, I forget the other one. Never mind. But nice work, FCS, you always do great work. So your reputation speaks for itself. So is there a motion to, there's a pretty lengthy motion in our packet here to, what is that, 113?
I move that we approve the cost recovery analysis findings, recommendations as identified in the Development Services Cost of Service and Fee Study dated July 2017 by the FCS group in attachment two and adopt resolution in attachment three.
Second.
It's moved by Councilmember Sandberg, second by everybody. We'll give it to Councilmember McNeil to approve the cost recovery analysis finding recommendations as identified in the Development Services Cost of Services and Fees Study dated July 2017 by the FCS group in attachment two and adopt resolution in attachment three. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead, place your vote. Passes unanimously, the Councilmembers by the absent and excused. And we are on to AB 17-126 Quarterly Update and Progress Towards Council's Goals. And I believe the city manager is going to provide a presentation.
Yes, a very brief presentation for you this evening. So this is our second quarter presentation. We presented this for the first time a few months ago and this is our quarterly update for the council's goals. And this is the scorecard that we put into place that gives the council and the community the opportunity to see the progress that we're making on accomplishing the council's goals. It hopefully provides you with more up-to-date information. You feel more connected to the work that we're doing. Also provides you the opportunity to ask questions, redirect, maybe give us some additional feedback. And if we're heading down the wrong path with something, to have an earlier opportunity to say, oh, that's not what we had in mind. We'd like you to look at something else or go a different direction. So a very brief overview of your goals and I'm. So a very brief overview of your goals, and I'm going to skip over the Safe Streets and Sidewalks because interim deputy city manager Lenhart slash Public Works Director is going to make the quarterly presentation on the Safe Streets and Sidewalks program. So for fiscal stability, Finance Department continues to work with the state auditors who are in-house and about to wrap up our annual audit, and they continue to do work on the, tracking our 1718 budget. We'll be bringing back information in both September and in February 2018 with regards to the biennium budget. The Main Street enhancements, construction began in April and, and work continues. And as you heard in the earlier presentation, I think that staff has done an excellent job in communicating with the downtown businesses. We know this is a hardship, we appreciate their patience, and we continue to look forward to the November opening of that project. Community health for those in need. Again, we're just showing you the work that we're doing and happy to answer any questions you might have, but it shows the work, especially from the Police Department and other departments that are happening in this area. Citywide technology strategy, again, just an exceptional IT department, continues to make great progress in, in the large projects that they're implementing. We're very excited about the finance utility billing software, and we look forward to that implementation over the next year. The 18, the 1920 budget will be a part of this new package and provide the community an opportunity to see more of our data and also to create a more transparent and usable budget document for 1920. The public safety strategies, both for fire and police, you can see the work that's happening in those areas. For community events and activities, the tourism coordinator and the activities plans, you can see the schedule of things that are happening there. The Canyon Park Master Planning, council recently approved the contract for the consultant to come in and begin the outreach, and that work has started. And we're very excited about initiating our work on that. To complete the downtown development, that's where you're going to see some yellow and some red. There have been some changes in that and work is slower than expected, especially with regards to the remediation of some of the properties. And council also made some decisions with regards to some of the properties, and so we've had to redirect and, and, and look at some different options and directions for some of those parcels. An affordable housing strategy, we thought we would bring that forward. It's been going through Planning Commission for some very deliberative discussion. We'd hope to bring that in September. Most likely, it's going to be more towards the first of the year in 2018. The Wayne Golf Course, council made a decision to recommend purchase of that parcel, and we'll be bringing forward a funding plan and final approval for that purchase in October. For Parks and Recreation, Open Space Partnerships, there's some information there for you about the possible partnerships and pursuing grant opportunities. I'm delighted, as is the director of Parks and Recreation, to announce that our parks planning and grants manager will be starting on August 1st. And so that's just super for the, for the organization and the community. And then citywide training, team building and organizational development, I've been delivering some trainings to the staff, and we continue to look for opportunities so that they can grow and, and go to different trainings and, and be supported and expand their skills. It helps with morale, but it also helps with their technical skills so they can be exceptional in the jobs that, that they're doing for, for the council and the community and the organization. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I think Director Lenhart, interim deputy director Lenhart, would like to make her presentation, and then you could ask questions on, on the entire scorecard.
Good evening, council. I, like the city manager, I will be very brief. We have been knocking out of the park on the operations side this quarter. The operations team was able to get up to full staff in the second quarter, and as a result, we quadrupled our efforts on sidewalk and asphalt repairs in quarter two. But really, the second quarter was all about safe school walk routes. The task force completed their work with city staff on prioritizing different projects and calling our attention to other maintenance needs and that sort of thing. That report will come to you with the third quarter Safe Streets and Sidewalks report. What you see on the map here is in May, we kicked off our pedestrian flag program. So this map shows all of the different locations where we have pedestrian flags at existing crossings around various schools. And also, the city was, was awarded grants from the State of Washington Safe Routes to School Program for three different sidewalks in the city. So this is a very exciting opportunity for us. It's a little over $2 million total, and we will be using some city funds and some levy funds to match these grant funds for these three projects. Two near West Hill Elementary and Bothell High, and one near Canyon Park Middle School. So that's quick for me. Have a lot more in third quarter. You just, you just approved two, a few contracts for some pavement work and that sort of thing at last week's meeting, so we'll report out on that next, next quarter. So...
Great. Is there any questions from the council? For either? Speechless. How about that? All right. Well, thanks, guys. Next, we have AB 17-127, the Pro-Con Committee Assignments for Snohomish County EMS Levy. Do we have to, we don't have to excuse ourselves and come back as the EMS board, do we?
Oh, I don't know. To point to the... Oh, that's a very good question.
I think, I think we do.
I think you do as well. I think you would need to recess and then reconvene.
All right, so we're, Bothell City Council go to recess. Bothell City, oh, wait, now we're reconvening as the EMS board of Snohomish County?
That's correct.
Okay. So now we're all board members?
Yes.
Okay.
So as board members, on June 20th, 2017, you authorized the district to impose a regular property tax levy that would be going before the voters on November 7th to do an assessment to a maximum amount of .335 or less than $1,000 of assessed value for each of the six consecutive years. Part of that is the council is responsible for appointing a pro-con committee and committee members to that for the ballot measure. We did do advertisements in the paper and social media, our usually, our usual advertising avenues. You do need to make this appointment by August 1st. We received one application, and that was for the procommittee, and that is Nikki Honey. And so, count, staff is recommending that council appoint her to the concommittee, I mean, to the procommittee. No applications were received for the concommittee. If the council's unable to identify someone for your concommittee, then the county will attempt to find someone using their regular avenues for advertisement. But we do need to submit this by August 1st, and so it cannot be continued. A decision needs to be made tonight by the council.
You mean the board?
By the, by the board.
Okay. It's a fun game. Okay, is there any board members that have questions or discussion? None? Okay, is there a motion of the board to appoint procommittee representative Nikki Honey?
I move that we appoint Nikki Honey to the procommittee and direct staff to notify Snohomish County of its advertising efforts to see if they can attempt to find interested persons to serve on either committee.
It's moved, seconded by a board member, I'm sorry, moved by a board member, Doerr, seconded by board member McNeil, to appoint Nikki Honey to the procommittee and direct the staff to notify Snohomish County of its advertising efforts to see if they can attempt to find interested persons to serve on either committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead, place your vote. Passes unanimously with, with board members, Spivey absent and excused. Is there a motion to, I don't think we have anything else as either board or committee or council?
Motion to adjourn.
It's moved by board member Doerr and seconded by board member McNeil to adjourn. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Freed?
Yeah, my bet was on 9:40, but I lost.
I just want to say, have a good August, you guys. See you in September. Place your vote.
I think you need to do one more German as the city council.
That's correct. Because you did...
Really?
Well, yeah, I tried to, I tried to cut in, but I...
I can talk for six minutes, so he loses his bet.
All right, we're adjourned as the board. The motion still stands as, now, no, now we're back as the city council, the motion still stands as stated previously. Is there any discussion on the motion? No, it was posted. Never mind, we're, we're adjourned. Passes six to, or five to one? You voted no? All right. We're adjourned.